All right, good morning, everybody. Uh, call the meeting in order, do have a quorum, um. We need to add to the agenda, so I'd like to take a motion to amend the agenda to add the manure management plans for three facilities of the county. There's motions, our second.
I'll second it.
All in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, I will add that to the agenda. All right, a motion to approve the amended agenda and approve the minutes.
Just a second here. My, my gives on, isn't he?
Yeah, noxious weeds. Yeah, he's an engineer, yeah, yeah.
He's on.
So, uh, motion to approve the amended agenda and the minutes, please.
I'll make that motion.
Yep, second. All right, all in favor, I?
All right.
Close. Motion will carry. Rich Brum.
Morning.
I'll start with Mike, Mike, noxious weeds report, I see.
Yeah, I was, uh, it's just, uh, something that's in the state codes, uh, noxious weed, the resolution for the destruction of noxious weeds.
Yep.
It's an annual thing, uh, pretty simple, uh, straightforward.
So some of the parched sites you've been attacking, where do you think you're going to get ahead of this? Some of those?
I think so, you know, it's been, it's been three years of good spraying on that, and it should, it's a biennial, so we should start seeing results.
That's what I was thinking, so.
Yeah, it's looking good to me.
One, some of the sites you've been hitting up by me, I noticed were kind of disappearing, so that's good.
Yeah, but there's, you know, when one plant produces a hundred thousand seeds, it's hard to get ahead of it once.
Right. It's also easy to spread with mower and things like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, what the plan is eventually, I mean, if you, the only a person could do probably is what, mow all the ditches for, for about three or four years, so you.
Well, mowing promotes it, so.
Yeah.
It does, it does, what if you, if you mow before it seeds though, or?
Yeah, yeah, but if the seed is still there, then it gives a chance for the sunlight to get below the grass, and then.
You can actually better reflect some kind of natives and stuff to overpower.
Kind of shade, shade it out, so it doesn't, doesn't grow.
More aggressive, what that is and helps lessen, I guess, yeah, cause I.
Well, because you see all the, all the landowners from all their ditches, they don't have much in there, they keep mowing.
Well, that's because they stay ahead of them, they're always in the road, goes that state, whatever, if you keep mowing them.
Yeah.
But I know when I.
If you mow them after their seed, then you just end up with a problem.
Same, same thing for thistles, if people mow the ditch and they stop, it's thistles coming down.
Then they really come, yeah.
Yeah, they're in there, but, yeah, you've probably seen, we've been out, I've been working with the, the roads crew, and we were out this winter. We did mowing and burning, had, you know, prepping for snow, and then we didn't have snow, so we had a lot of time to, uh, cut brush and trees, and we've been about everywhere in the county doing that.
They did a lot of good job there. Saw a lot of brush clean up.
More visible.
And, and, and the guys do a good finish job, too, it's easy to go in and just cut some things here and there, but we, we aim for a goal, you know, to have a good line back, and it, it looks good when we're done.
Yeah, cleaned out really nice.
They do a great job.
You treated all those stumps and?
Yeah, yeah, everything, it's good to treat, so. And then the hydro seeding, I was out hydro seeding too, you've probably seen that, here and there, some of that green mulch.
Yeah, we kind of trying to do that behind ditch cleaning.
Yeah.
Right, just to get, try to get grass back in instead of weeds.
Yeah, but last year was the first year for that, because we just got the hydro seeding.
Right, right, so.
We'll see, it seems to have worked.
Yeah, so there's a ditch up, Silver Lake, it's on that tile over there, the birdie farm up there, and Fulton Farm over this. You guys did a little bit of a culvert cleaning up there, and you had hydro seeded up around the culvert.
Okay.
Well, they put a new main line in up there all the way along that road for about three quarters of it.
This is off Silver Lake Road in the south?
No, it's, uh.
I don't know where it is.
Yeah. And they've just finished leveling all the dirt, so.
It'd be perfect.
The field side is probably got zero grass for about three quarters of the way, even the bottom of the ditch, you might want to address that, so. So.
Cool. Perfect. You guys got any other questions for Mike, he's here?
We're working on, Mike and I are working on equipment things, so he's good.
Yeah, in between that, if Rich has got something in the equipment budget, or if I can't get anything together, some grants, I'm hoping to write some grants for maybe some fire, some burning equipment, some chainsaws maybe, and some more spray equipment, too, so that's my thoughts anyway.
Sorry, a little bigger.
That's a weird issue, yeah, for you guys, yeah.
Good.
That's just my thoughts.
Yeah, are you guys eligible for getting DNR grants for that stuff, or?
Yeah, yeah, well, for my stuff, it's usually the Living Roadway Trust fund, if you've ever heard of that one, so.
Yep, yep.
It's specific for what I do.
Okay.
And remember that we were, when we hired him on as the roadside manager, we were trying to probably put more natives in there, and we're doing the hydro seeding, that's what we're putting down, right?
Yeah, we will, but we weren't last year, but I, I just picked up seed last week, so we, we have twenty acres of it. Some is for ditch cleanouts without as many flowers and stuff, and some is for natural restoration, so.
Okay.
We have some options now.
Good.
It's good, I mean, sometimes the waterway mix is going to be the best if it's really erodible, I mean, it, it's every site by site.
Yeah. No, it's good.
Yeah, it's, things are going well.
She was a site on, uh, four hundred thirty street, which I live on, of course, but now they have an, and that goes east, you guys cleaned the road ditch here a couple of years ago, and never really reseeded that, or whatever, there's a lot of weeds in it.
It's really never recovered?
No, the, at least the part on the bottom side hasn't, and I think I talked to you about that once, we got seen that, but I don't know if that would be a place for some of those new natives, and you know, that, with they, because there's, I don't know what's in there for weeds right now, but there's weeds in there.
Hard surfaces.
Yeah.
It's good. A lot of people buy that, too.
Right, because I know you've been out there and hit a lot of stuff, but that probably wouldn't hurt if, I mean, if it's a good project place for something like that, too.
Towards Dove.
It's from Dove and going, uh, west towards Joyce and four hundred thirty street, I appreciate it, yeah. And it's probably quarter mile past Dove on the south side of the road, they cleaned the ditch there, I think it's two years ago now.
Oh, yeah, I'm familiar.
Yeah.
Okay. Ah, resolution, twenty twenty one dot oh four dot one nine, uh, destruction of noxious weeds be resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Worth County, Iowa, that pursuant to the provisions of chapter three seventeen of the code Iowa as amended, is hereby ordered that each owner and each person in possession or control of any land in Worth County, Iowa shall cut, burn, or otherwise destroy all noxious weeds thereon as defined in this chapter. At such time in ye, each year, and in such manner shall prevent said weeds from blooming or coming into maturity, and shall keep such lands free from growth or any other weeds, and shall render the streets or highways adjoining said lands unsafe for public travel. Noxious weed shall be cut or otherwise destroyed. Primary noxious weeds will shall include quack grass, bull thistle, perennial salt thistle, horse nettle, Canada thistle, leafy spurge, perennial pepper grass, European morning glory, field blind weed, Russian nap weed, buckthorn, and palmer, amaranth. Secondary noxious weed shall include, uh, butter, print annual, wild carrot biennial, and perennial, sour dock perennial, multifloral rose, teasel biennial, cocklebar annual, buckthorn perennial, smooth dock perennial, wild sunflower annual, shatter cane annual, wild mustard annual, sheep sorrel, poison hemlock, and puncture vine annual. Uh, that all weeds on county trunk and local road, county roads between fence lines will be taken care of by the county. That if the owners or persons in possession of, control of any lands in Worth County fail to comply with the foregoing order, the weed commissioner shall cause this to be done at that, and at the expense of said work, including costs of survey notices and other costs, if any, to be assessed against the real estate. That the county auditor be and is hereby directed to cause notice of making and entering the foregoing order by publication in each of the official newspapers of the county by request of County Weed Commissioner Mike Bodie at one thousand Central Avenue, Northwood, Iowa, phone number six four one three nine oh zero two six eight. We could commissioner be given full authority and power to carry out the provisions of the resolution uh, published upon the order of the Worth County Board of Supervisors, A.J. Stoner's chair, this nineteenth day of April twenty twenty one. Take a motion to approve the noxious weeds resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry, roll call vote, do that again, Blober?
Aye.
Maybe.
Aye.
Stone, aye. That resolution will pass.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike.
I appreciate not having to read that either.
I'm getting used to. All right, Rich, what do you got?
Not a whole lot this morning, um, working with the guys on discussion and ten hour days, so. Working through that, um, we're working on some rock maps and some paint maps. I don't know if I told you guys a couple of weeks ago, we got word that roadway striping is getting three times the cost of what it was last year.
Boy.
Because of the freeze in Texas and the polymers they use, or whatever, we got, their plant grows up. What I've been told is paint's expensive this year, so we'll see how long that lasts. A lot of the paint companies now are being rationed, so they only get, you know, if they have a job, they turn in order and they give away that amount, so.
I've heard that with tile and PVC pipes, um, everybody's rationed because resin, there's a lot of resins down there, and, and it's through the roof, and it's hard to get, so.
Blumber's not cheap either.
Mm-hmm.
I think he's a plumber for fifty dollars. If you need it, you need it.
Right.
So anyway, we're working on that kind of stuff, um. The, uh, one thing we, uh, got a call this morning from the Wind Tower group out in Deer Creek, and they're taking out their return radiuses and stuff like that, and they're stockpiling the rock in that fresh avenue lay down yard. And they've offered that about five thousand tons of rock to us, so, they said, you got any roads, they said, we got plenty of roads, so we'll probably be throwing it on some roads that are, that area, a bit of work that didn't get worked on last, we didn't do a rock run last year out there because they were doing order. And so, we're bringing in, uh, we'll, once they stockpile it, it'll be mid-May or whatever, and then we'll see what they've got going on, we can if, we need to spread it ourselves, we can spread it ourselves, we can kind of target that area up in that.
Yeah, keep the whole on close line.
Five thousand tons, you know, depending, you know, we've got a lot of options with the material, if we wanted to kind of lay it down a little heavier or not, but.
So, like, three quarter inch roadstone?
It's the, it's our regular gradation that we put out there, so it's, it could be a top size of one inch, I think.
Perfect, perfect.
So, good for us, I guess.
Yeah.
We didn't get rid of a lot of dirt out there, too, so, um, with that, and then, uh, I know I called it both you and A.J., I didn't, I need to get your number sometimes. I thought I had it, but anyway, uh, the, the paving contractor for one oh five called and wanted to schedule pre-con for I think it's like the twenty ninth of April, but, um, they're looking for a plant site, and they had mentioned about, you know, I've given them some options of where to look. And they're, they'll probably, they'll find one, it's just that they were all so curious about lots in the industrial park out there, and what a lot would cost them to purchase if they wanted to purchase something a little bit bigger, so. I just said you guys were going to be discussing that this week, on the board, I think you guys have it on the board meeting agenda, to discuss it, so.
Yeah.
There's a couple of things there, one, do you want to sell a lot, number two, what's it going to cost, and, you know, and, and so I just said I would present them with information, they, they, they may have one spot figured out already, but so, but anyway, just.
I would imagine if falling or zoning, they'd have to get bearings if they were probably. I mean, I don't know what they're zoning for, they're really exactly either, how that would be.
Right.
Would be.
As a, as a temporary thing.
Even if they could work it out with the fireworks place, for example.
Yeah, that's one location that.
Right. Cause they're obviously coming in after July first.
From what I've been told, it'll be after July, or it'll be third week in July, maybe even later, when I get to it, so, I mean, they just, they need about three acres to be really efficient.
Right.
You know, they give a lot of room, but.
Yeah.
So they're still working on that, but I just thought I'd mention it to you folks and see, you know, we don't have to have a decision today, but, and I just want to listen to the conversation about, you know, what those lots are going to sell for.
Yeah.
They can have an idea, it's just, you know, it's not the first time they would have to have ever bought a lot to, to put a plant on, and then they, they own it and they resell it, or whatever.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, that's just an option, and I know, you know, everybody in the past has called, and this is right now, it's not, not, and so, everybody knew it wasn't an option, but now we're asking again, I guess.
Yep, yep, and I, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah.
I got mixed emotions, like, yeah, yeah, we could use the money for income as rent, or, but the only lot I would
Be way down the corner.
That south lot to keep, I'd like to keep that traffic off that road.
Oh, yeah, and I think that would be.
Yeah, but if, if they were on that far south one, then they could stay on.
I don't think they would have a problem with that either, it's just, it, it would take some discussion between you and, and, and the contractor to, to discuss what you may or may not want to do.
And obviously, biggest thing would be restoration.
Right, and maybe, maybe we'd be lucky and come down to a developer or whatever, and, and they want, they're, they're okay with it for a couple of months.
Right, yeah, unless it sells between now and then, because that's, you know, because that's the biggest lot, so it's going to be, even though it was, it's less per square foot, just because of the shape of it.
But it's bigger.
But it's bigger acre size, so it's, it's going to be the most expensive lot there, um.
They're not, they're not counting on being able to get a lot out there, but they're, they're asking the question.
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, that's fine.
I suppose we'd have to look into zoning a little bit, too, and see what the, even if, like, say, the fireworks place, if there's a temporary permit they'd have to get, probably.
Yeah.
Which sure would be.
Yeah, I'm just guessing, I don't know.
Because we do have some stipulations with that property.
Sure.
Um, when we got it from the casino, when we got the covenants.
Covenants.
Yep, so we'd have to just make sure, and I guess, might even have to ask their permission a little bit. Because if it's something that, if this is a temporary thing for whatever it's going to take, more, what do they figure, a month, two months?
I would, yeah, you know, it would be more than that.
By the time they set up and tear down, and.
It'd take longer to do this stretch here, so, you know.
Usually I like to sit in a quarry, but move it further away on this run, so.
Right.
So anyway, just put it in the back of your head, and then, then I'll, you know, I'll contact them sometime this week and let them know what, what the discussion was here as far as the industrial lot goes, you know, not to say that you guys are agreeing to anything at all, but just to give them some information.
Yeah, no, that's, that's.
And then we're just checking on Jim Moody's schedule yet.
Um, is that today?
No. Sorry.
Uh, no, I, no, I just wondered.
Cause I got.
When it was.
As soon as we're done hearing, before we go over to like, mouse.
Okay.
Um, then I don't know, if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be, just give them to Dranage, like, yeah.
Um, no, not that I'm aware of either. You got any for Rich, no?
Okay, one thing we had, uh, Russ had called last week from is it, D.D. Garnett, he lives in D.D. twenty one, and when the, when the city of Northwood did that whole wetland area there down there, I think one of his tile got cut, now it's a private tile, but he's still got water sitting in it, so we haven't had enough rain to have water sitting in the field, so he's thinking one of his private tile got cut.
Okay.
And it doesn't have an outlet now, so I don't know what, I wasn't involved in that whole situation to know what might happen, but I wondered who the contractor was or whatever, to go back and maybe see if they could find out what happened.
Holland.
Was it coal?
Oh, it's Holland, I think.
Holland.
Out of Forest City, right?
Right, yeah, that's who it was.
Yeah. Holland contract.
Cause it started before I got on, and then it finished early.
Yeah.
Maybe it finished two years.
Uh, yeah, it was, I think we closed it out the year I came on.
Thank you, right, well, I just, I guess I kind of figure if there's, if there's damage out there, then somebody needs to.
Right.
Yeah, whether the district takes care, I don't know how the whole project was put together, but.
Well, he can prove that it was damage done to the, when the district put it in, the district would have to pay for it.
Right, well.
I mean, if he, has anybody that's willing to explore, or they want?
I guess, I just, what's his thought, yeah. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk with Russ a little bit more.
Yes, I mean, he need, he needs to pursue getting it fixed, so.
Right, he does, he just didn't know how to go about doing it because it would be.
That, or, I mean, and it's hard to see that stuff when they're digging, who knows how wet it was, if they didn't notice they hit one or not.
Right.
Whether they got them all repaired properly, because I think everything that went through there had to get reconnected, and.
Yeah.
Right.
You know.
I'm not sure which field these have.
Yeah, I did, I know, it's like, I don't know if it's through that wetland area or not, I guess, I don't know.
Cause I know that wetland area is right next to his house.
Yeah, I, he said it was north of, or, or three seventy, I think.
So maybe north of his house, then it probably comes in towards the north end of that wetland. Okay. Yeah, I guess as much info as you can, and I guess we can, I can send an email to John Rosengren and just ask him who's responsible or who's liable.
Yeah.
If there's an issue, obviously, yeah, he should not have, why do you think anybody has water standing? If you do, you got problems, you know.
Yeah, you do, it's an obvious problem.
You got a wetland.
Uh-huh, so, okay. Yeah, I'll do that, we'll send an email to John and just get his input, and then, uh, once I hear from him, I'll forward it on to you, so.
That'd be cool. That's all I got for you.
Okay. Oh, thank you, uh, drainage, also, uh, Gordy Hagan inquired about some cleaning.
I got a call, uh, last week, early last week, and, and he's called about this for that's why we did the reclassification of D.D. two and all the laterals, this is L.H. two, but look at it, right. It probably needs a little work, um, he's willing to do it or pursue it a little bit on his own, and I said, well, I can bring it up with the board, I said, I'd be honest, I think it's probably going to be part of the whole project going forward at some point. Whatever we decide to do with T.D. two. You know, and if it's, you know, when the engineers look at it and they say, yep, it needs to be dipped, clean, you know, and I mean, it I'm actually okay with it, I think if he wants to go ahead and pursue it on his own, and we've got all the rightaways and stuff, but he's going to go through somebody else's property to get it. You know.
Well.
So, that's the only other issue.
That's, how, is that going to cause grief or anything with cleaning the rest of the ditch, and I mean.
It doesn't have to cause grief, but it's the thing of it is, if you'd just be a little patient, it would be part of the whole project.
Right, yeah, so I'm, you know, I, I don't want it to, you know, they go in and, and whoever it is, those guys pay a bunch, well, then we clean the rest of the dish, and all of a sudden, they're getting another bill on top of that, you know. It just, I know, I'm sure he understands that, but.
Is there a control, control structure down?
That's, you know, that was his biggest beef for early on, and at that time, there was really nothing we could do because of the history, until we got reclassified, and we bought all the rightaways and easements and all that. And that's all been taken care of, and I think he still wants that control structure out of there. But I was driving, I drove by there a couple of times now, looking out across, around Mexican field. And I, one of them, there's, there's actually a driveway going across, I mean, to the other side of the two, two places, they have driveways going across there to get to the other side of their, their property. So, I mean, they're going to have to deal with that if they're wrong, I mean, then those landowners, if they, if they did clean that ditch and it gets deeper, and now those pipes aren't deep enough, or whatever, that means they've got to lower them or whatever, and they're on expense.
Yeah, yeah.
That's my biggest, you know, I'm, I'm okay, but he's going to grab half a dozen guys and say, oh, let's get it cleaned, but he needs to also talk to the two that are on the, on the area he's going to go through and get it okay with them.
Now, is that drainage structure, is that at the end of the district, and then it goes private, or?
No, it's all part of the district now, and it actually was part of the district, anyway, there was just a private agreement years ago that I think over ten would put together with several landowners to get that open ditch dug up that far, well, the people farther up said, no, so then.
That's like a lift, wouldn't you?
It's not a lift, it's like a control structure, I don't really, I've never really found it.
I haven't seen it.
I just, I've been told it's there, I mean, you can kind of see it, but I've never been actually down and looked at it, so. But during the reclassification, it's, it's all part of the district. You know, we run this, they own it, but we manage it every day.
Right, right.
So, and like I say, I really think if he's patient during the engineer study, it's all going to come out, and he's not having drainage issues now, but he did, you know, the segment of ditch he cleaned from kind of where his district tile outlets into that open ditch down to the interstate, it made a huge difference. So he knows if he goes on the other side of the interstate and down, it's going to really improve the drainage for everybody up above the interstate, there's no doubt. And it can be done without actually cleaning D.D. two, that's not the issue, but, you know, but like I say, and I tried, you know, tried to explain, right, you're going to get it regardless, I mean, you know, I mean, I can pursue it a little further, and I think he's, I don't know if he's getting a little surgery done this morning on his knee, I think, or this week he is.
I'm going to say his, like, cane or crutches or whatever.
Well, he had blood clot that day, I think he told me, but now he's got a tear in his knee or something, he's got to get fixed, I was told, so. I'll, I'll contact him again and just talk to him a little more, and see if he wants to pursue it, and just kind of explain probably who we need to talk to, I think Pat Mathis and John Tenwell, I think, are the two down there that would actually have crossings into the, the own property on both sides of that ditch, so. You know, that's going to affect those crossings, then he's going to want to work that out, too, I mean, he needs to work out the whole thing, if he wants to do it privately.
Well, how far does he want to clean?
You know, it would probably, if he's doing, I mean, at least for the control, control structure, which is probably I don't know, it's quite a half mile, quarter to half mile, and if he's doing it, he just will go all the way down to Ironwood and get the trees out, and which is going to, like I say, it's going to be, that's going to end up being part of D.D. two if we get.
I know, and, you know, we got him, we've already got him set doing the study to see what it's going to take, getting assessments on that stuff. If we can, I mean, was something they were hoping to get done this spring before they planted, I just.
Well, I don't know about planting, it won't affect him planting, and actually, it's all CR, there's the other thing, it's all CRP along there. And so, if he goes in and does this kind of privately, it's kind of like, well, yeah, even though we got all the drainage stuff in place, it's kind of like, well, oh, you know, how do you go in and tell those people, no, you guys got to reseed your, even though you didn't have to pay to clean it, but you still got to reseed your CRP.
Right, that'll have to get restored back to the way it was.
Right, and, you know, with the way we've got all the easements set up and stuff, you don't, generally, you pay for that yourself during the cleanup, you know.
Yeah.
It's like crop damage and stuff, so.
Yeah.
I'll discuss a little more with them.
I, yeah, if you want to, and if you need to talk to John, too.
Yeah, I can get in touch with John. I mean, they could maybe do a quick look at it, too, and see, yeah, what needs to be done, or.
Right.
You know, if it gets done here this spring or summer, and.
If they're just cleaning it back to the original levels, that shouldn't change anything with the dr, the crossings.
Well, we're not doing a big improvement.
Technically, it wouldn't have to be engineered if it's just a cleaning, but I don't believe anyways, I guess I'm not.
No.
Pretty sure, as long as it.
Well, unless it's above a certain threshold, too.
Right, yeah, that's things, yeah, the, the dollar mark.
That done for about a buck fifty a foot.
I was going to say, two bucks.
Two bucks a foot at the most, I think.
So even if you're in a mile, you're still only looking at twelve thousand dollars.
Which, five, six people are going to split it up, it's no big deal, they're all willing to go along, I mean, that's a great way to do it. They all got to be, he's also got to include the people that he's going to be going through.
Yeah.
And I need to discuss it.
And, and, yeah, just remind him of their CRP there, that someone's got to restore that.
Yeah.
Some points, yeah, I guess you're going to talk with him a little more, and.
Yeah.
And then John, if you have any other questions, we'll get info from him, because.
Yep.
Okay, sounds good to me.
Yep.
Yeah, if he could wait till whenever, it's coming.
Well, as soon as we get the study back, I know what it's going to say, so.
Yep.
And we'll just have to proceed from there.
Yep, so, okay. Uh, anything else of drainage? Um, I didn't see any drainage claims, so we were all good there. Um, got payroll claims, I believe, here. Yes, payroll claims.
Motion to approve payroll claims.
Motion to approve payroll claims, there's a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Hey. Reports, um. Got one from clerk to court for twenty two hundred eight dollars and ninety cents. Do you motion to approve the reports?
I'll make a motion to approve the reports.
One second.
Motion has second, any discussion? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Payroll eligibility and salary changes, got, uh, longevity for Chad Wurtzel and, um, pay raise for completion of required state certifications for Jake Lee.
Motion to approve payroll claims, or.
Changes?
Payroll changes.
Okay, motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any other discussion on them? All in favor, I?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion will carry. Okay, uh, no liquor licenses, I didn't see in there. Okay, uh, no liquor licenses, I didn't see in there. Discussion on safety, oh, I'm running a timetable here, yes, we are. Nine o'clock. Uh, we'll jump down to a public hearing, our first public hearing. This one is for the, uh, to prohibit alcoholic Keenan's Corey. The ordinance. Twenty twenty-one dot oh four dot nineteen dot oh one. That it shall be a criminal offense for an individual to be in possession of alcohol in the property known as Keenan's Corey from Friday before Memorial Day to Tuesday following Labor Day. This includes parking lots, access roads, playgrounds, beach and water, does not include the interior of the rental, rentable shelter house to individuals that have. Rented or guests of the same. Uh, any penalties of violation of this ordinance be a simple misdemeanor punishable by a fine of at least sixty-five dollars but not exceeding six hundred twenty-five. And or by imprisonment in the county jail not exceeding thirty days. This ordinance shall become effective after its pass, passage and publication by law. So I will recess the regular meeting. And, oh, but take a motion to open the public hearing for the Keenan's Corey ordinance. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so roll call, Lowberg, maybe, stone, I. The public hearing is open, uh, does anyone from the public have any questions or concerns regarding the pro. Prohibition of alcohol during said time of the ordinance? You hear anything, Dan, in your office? Doesn't appear that anything has come through the auditor's office. Jim on there? Jim?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, um, this was, uh, obviously brought to us by your board. Conservation Board, have you heard any, have you heard any complaints or problems from the, the public?
No.
Okay. All right, I'll ask one more time if anyone from the public would like to comment or concerns with the, uh, ordinance. Okay, I'll take a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, to roll call vote, Slowberg, maybe, stone, I, public hearing is closed. We'll reconvene the regular meeting. Now, we can. Wave the second and third readings. Um, we have the option to, beans, there's a majority vote on the ordinance, so I'll take a motion to waive the second and third readings of this ordinance.
I will also move.
Okay, there's motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there's motion and a second to waive the second and third readings, any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, Lowberg, maybe, stone, I. The ordinance twenty twenty-one dot oh four dot one nine dot oh one has passed, and the readings, second and third readings will be, um, will not be. Used, I guess, so.
Did I miss it, or did we not make a motion to approve?
Oh, sorry, we did, sorry, we approved the second, third reading, now. To approve the ordinance. Okay, thanks, Mark. There's motions, there's a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'll do a roll call vote once again, Lowberg, maybe, stone, I, the ordinance now will pass. Lot going on with those in and outs, okay, I will reconvene, or we already reconvened, so. We'll move down the list and tell our next public hearing reading at nine fifteen, so we got a little bit, uh, safety committee discussion.
We're still, wait, now we gotta reset up the meeting, cause it's kind of delayed there the other week, so that's your goal, right?
Right.
Open next two, three weeks.
Yeah.
You know, get something done.
Russ was trying to get in contact with them, so.
Okay.
Sounds good, um. Yeah, so I'm gonna need to keep on, I guess. Okay, um, we haven't heard much on the road vacation over Cardinal and Dogwood. Or three hundred sixtieth street, Windworth, Betco, I see Melissa was on this forum.
Um, we just had the advisory board meeting last week, and we have an exact board meeting today.
Sounds good, you're making us lunch, you're making us lunch?
Yep, Subway. And Jackie, I am working on your numbers, um, your report, so it's coming slowly but surely, nobody's returning my phone calls. I'll hound them.
Name of the game sometimes. All right, that it?
Yep.
You guys got anything from Melissa, or we'll just, we'll see her in a couple hours, okay, thank you. Jason Petersburg on there, I believe so. Let's see him, so. Okay, um. Yeah, I think everything's good, we got the approval on the water tower maintenance stuff, he had already contacted Chris. Um, about coming in and. It was late May, I think, so he'll be doing whatever he needs to do to get ready there, so, but those will get inspected and see what kind of shape they're in, so. All right, so people service, I don't think Chris had anything, I haven't seen any emails, so, been quiet out there, which is good. Um, department head discussion COVID nineteen policies. Uh, we kept our policies in place as far as masks in the courthouse, and I was gonna run through the end of the month. Uh, last week, we had asked everybody to, uh, kind of get, gather their opinions and see what they wanna do. Um, actually, I'd like to talk with Jake Hanson, if he's on there.
Jake was on there, yeah, there he is.
Sure, if he's busy. I'll try to come back to him, I guess, uh, just curious on what their thought is, they're the busiest office, it appears, so. Any other department heads, Dan? Do you think they stay status quo there for a while, or?
I'm fine with opening it up to mass, optional, I'll hear, anybody goes back in the jail area, I'm still gonna keep mask going, just because they don't have a choice. So.
Right, okay, yeah, and that's limited access anyways, you're only gonna allow certain people back there anyways, right? Optional for you?
If we're still, we're still feeling like we want to, we'll stay around too.
Uh, Jesus says recommended, not mandatory, so we could just, if people wanna wear them.
He's still leaves signs up and, I mean, he'll change our sign up. Not required, but, yeah.
Supposed to speak up when you talk, you're supposed to speak up when you talk, I just got notified. Joel must not be able to hear you very well. He's probably not, he's probably not listening either.
I just.
So, okay.
We'll change our signs a little bit.
Um, Jackie, if you wanna throw in on the chat, is that all right with your office as well? If we go to just, uh, recommended versus mandatory.
Conservation is good with that too, it doesn't, doesn't matter to us, we're usually by ourselves and pieces of equipment anyways, but.
You're pretty low traffic in your office anyways, right?
Yeah, most of the time, no one's in our office.
Right, right. Um. I think courts are gonna still be.
It's still their choice, isn't it, and we can't.
Yeah, as far as going in the courtrooms, that's.
Yeah.
Um, obviously, they've got the window divider there for their separation at their, their counter, but the courtroom's upstairs and downstairs.
Right.
Um.
And we might be the same, but we're separate, I mean, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I guess we just have to.
There is a bit of, I guess, we'll have to.
We'll have to just post it, maybe post it at those doors, that, and obviously, people, if they're notified about coming into court, they probably know that they have to. I notify them somehow, I would assume, um. So.
I'm off duty, so I don't know.
Me too, I dodged that bullet. Um, well, it appears it's kind of a. I was gonna ask Jessica too, I guess, looks like people think we should ask, but she's not on this forum.
No, I guess we do have a meeting Friday.
See what.
But I would imagine.
Well, we got one more week, let's, uh, we'll stick with this for, obviously, for now, cause whatever we do, we'll probably run to the end of the month.
Okay.
Uh, just because that's what we did before. If you wanna get Jessica's opinion at your meeting Friday.
Yeah, I'm sure we'll talk about it.
See what she thinks, I'm sure they're still gonna do it with the number of people in and out of there, and that's totally fine, so. And then we can make the decision, I guess, uh, next Monday. So, okay, I think that's the plan, everybody. All right. Uh, board appointments, um, I've got an application here for. Zoning committee, we had a zoning member move. Out of the county. Um, I believe Chris Hagan. Moved out of the county, um, so we have to replace him. Um, and there's an application here for Todd Rothov, lives over on Ironwood Avenue. Um, works for the DOT, says he'd be able to put in the time as needed. Um, lives within the area, so. If you guys wanna take a peek at this.
You're good.
Yeah, I mean, it's, you know what it's like to get volunteers, let alone. Anything else? And Chris was the alternate for North Iowa Regional Housing as well. So, yeah, anyways, uh, I'll take a motion then to approve Todd Rothov as a zoning commission.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Right, any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
Oppose, all right, we'll contact him and let him know that he is, uh. Been approved, he's appointed to the zoning commission. Sign that, but I'm not doing it anyways. Um, and then, yeah, North Iowa Regional Housing, uh, delegate and alternate, as of right now, Enos is the delegate, and Chris was the alternate. Does not have to be a supervisor on that board, can be just any citizen, so. Have you talked to anybody or found anybody?
Nope, I'm searching, okay, any ideas?
I'll help look around, see if, it's just, the biggest thing is it's, uh, Tuesday mornings, the last Tuesday of the month at nine o'clock, right?
Uh, well, depends on how it works on a schedule, but.
If it's, there's nothing major on the, the board, the agenda, then they'll sometimes skip a month. Um, so maybe every other month, but it is that last Tuesday at like nine o'clock of the month, so, whoever does, I'd have to have. Be available, be somewhat available for, it's the biggest thing, it's, uh, just someone that wants to participate, so. I guess we can start searching for that, uh, delegate and an alternate. Um, and then I've got an application out for the. Board of, zoning board of adjustment, uh, Joe Thompson, who's township trustee down in Danville Township. Lives just off, uh, right on Highway nine west of Mamly there. Um, lived there for forty years and didn't realize he was in his own township, so, except all, I guess you could do a little learning then about what you've been living with. So, anyways, we'll see when I get that back from him. Uh, all right, appears to be not quite nine fifteen, that clock's off. Supervisor Weekly Report, seen us.
I had North Iowa Long Term Disaster Recovery, uh, they had a meeting, they hadn't had one since January of twenty. Uh, they made sure their bylaws were correct and made some changes there. They made sure their five oh one C three was in place, and right now, they're looking for new member recruitments, they're gonna make a brochure. They need to generate funds, and they discussed that. Uh, then I had Partners for Children, and basically, all that boiled down to is setting the funds for the different organizations that we support. And they mentioned that May is Foster Care Month, and then we all went to the Farm Bureau meeting and. Got updated on that, uh, they discussed the financial shape of the county, and they discussed countywide zoning. And then, uh, I had the Windworth Betco Advisory Board, and there it was just reports on all the communities and stuff like that. And then Melissa gave the staff report, and I imagine we're gonna get the same thing today, so. That was it for me.
That was it, huh? Sound like too bad of a week, though? All right, we're coming right up at nine fifteen. Okay, I will, uh, recess the regular meeting and, uh. Will open or take a motion to open the public hearing to repeal Worth County Ordinance twenty eighteen dot twelve dot oh three renewable energy provisions. There's a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, motion is second, uh, roll call, Lowberg, maybe, stone, I. Okay, the public hearing is open for. Ordinance number twenty twenty-one dot oh four dot nineteen dot oh two. Uh, is that the Worth County Ordinance twenty eighteen dot twelve dot oh three title renewable energy provisions. Is hereby revealed and repealed in its entirety, uh, this ordinance shall become effective after passage and publication by law. Uh, does anyone in the public have any questions or comments? Um, with repealing Worth County Ordinance twenty eighteen dot twelve dot oh three?
Yeah, I have a question, and repealing of that, what does that, that exactly mean?
The ordinance will no longer be in the ordinance book of the county.
To give them, to give the energy concern.
The, the, the thing with it is that it, that ordinance will allow, um. Renewable energies to not have to follow any zoning in the future, if there was any zoning, it kind of gives, in, in my opinion, free rein. Um, but, that, but that will take that away, so that if there was any future zoning to come into the county, the entire county. Then they would have to follow the guidelines, just like everybody else.
Right, and now that's not the case, they have to, right, too.
Yep, this ordinance states that they don't have to follow any zoning.
Oh, so we're gonna repeal that?
Yep.
That sounds like a good.
States it wouldn't be subject to any new zoning.
Yeah.
So, any zoning that is in place, it'd be subject to, like.
In those townships over there, they do have to follow that zoning, yeah.
But they will be subject to new zoning.
This, this ordinance says that they wouldn't be.
So we're gonna repeal that.
We repeal it so that they would be if there was zoning to come to the rest of the county.
Board, we're gonna have new zoning to safeguard those concerns of the resident?
Perhaps something we're working on right now, that's. That's, we're starting to work with the public on it and, and get, we have to start getting opinions on it, because it's, people all have different thoughts and theories. Um, obviously, it's, it's just the rural areas of the county, because we don't go in to towns and take, supersede their, their zoning, they've got their own. Um, so it'd just be more of the rural county members that we would have to discuss this and.
So when we look at the projections of the energy concern, uh, do you have a good understanding of where they wanna go?
Kind of.
Are they giving you a map or a forecast, or the easements that they've?
Not yet, there's, they're getting close on that, then.
Will we ask those questions?
We will be.
Yep.
Those are real serious questions.
Yeah, there, um, we've been talking with Mark Crowell from Invenergy, and he has been, um. Getting ready, they're getting ready to bring that to us here, uh, probably by June or July, way it was sounding, so. So hopefully, before too long, we'll, we'll get some more notification on what's going on, what their plans are.
Good.
So.
Will the zoning laws be any better or different than what the three townships are, or they are?
Probably not, but we're not sure on that, that's something that'll have to get brought up in the future.
And if the zoning is better than what the three townships already have, will those three townships be brought up to match?
I would assume.
It would be countywide, it'll be one set of rules for everyone.
Right for those two townships is right for Oklahoma, and go all we just saying.
Yep.
The other nine bring the last three up.
All right, thank you. Yep.
Julie Kuntz is here, can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I just wanted to say, I, I support the repeal of this ordinance, I don't think it is a, was a good thing to, um. Put a restriction on future regulations or future boards, and the only other thing I'd like to say is. There can be a win ordinance without countywide zoning, that's not saying I, I advocate for one or the other, I'm just making that comment. And that's all I have, I support the repeal of this, thanks.
Thank you.
I guess I would also, uh, support the repeal of that action.
Okay, thank you.
As a work kind of resident, but as an immediate landowner for, where some of these ideas are being proposed.
Okay, thank you.
I also approve of the repeal.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, one other question, does Mason City Airport ever get involved with the windmills?
They do have an ordinance out there for certain.
But they were saying on the wind farm two and, and Rockfield Township, they only came as far west as. Needed, they didn't wanna get in a flight plan on the air, the airlines.
Yeah, there, there is an ordinance out there, um, that protects the airport for certain distances. Uh, and I, and I, and you can find it on our website, I'm pretty sure, that's where I see, yeah, 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 so. Yeah, that would be a consideration, yes, sir.
Yeah, this is Joel, yeah, we do have, uh, zoning, uh, because of the airspace restrictions for Mason City, that does partially come up into our county.
Okay, and I'm pretty sure that's on our website, isn't it?
I believe so, if not, I can, I can certainly throw it on there again, but.
I, I think that's where I saw that, so.
Yep, Jim Rice, I think, actually penned the, uh, the, the verbiage on that back when he. Yep, Jim Rice, I think, actually penned the, uh, the, the, the verbiage on that back when he was implementing zoning.
Okay, thank you. Uh, is there anybody else in the public that'd like to weigh in on this ordinance? Okay, not hearing anything. I would take a motion to close the public hearing. Your motions are second.
I'll second it.
Uh, roll call vote, Lowberg, eyes maybe, stone, eye. The public hearing is closed. I will reconvene the regular meeting. Um, now is the opportunity if we should decide to either waive the next readings or should we go one more week? Anybody use a matter?
I, I just didn't wave them.
Okay.
But if you want to go another week.
It's probably not gonna make any difference.
I don't think it is either.
You know.
That a motion then?
I'll make a motion to waive the second and third reading.
Okay, there's a motion to waive the second and third readings.
I'll second it.
And there is a second. Um, any other discussion? Hearing none, the roll call vote, uh, Lowberg, eyes maybe, stone, eye. Okay, that will pass, the second and third readings will be waived. All right, now entertain a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty one dot oh four dot one nine dot oh two repealing Worth County Ordinance twenty eighteen dot twelve dot oh three. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, there's a motion of second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all roll call vote, Lowberg.
Eyes maybe.
No.
Stone, eye. Motion will pass, ordinance twenty eighteen dot twelve dot oh three will be repealed. Okay. Got a few minutes before our next one. Um, Supervisor Mark.
Um, we had, uh, hazmat transportation policy boards on Wednesday. For some reason, I was zooming for hazmat wouldn't come in, so Mark, there's something real important you caught there when you're down there on there in the great. I did get on for the DOT one, um, and that was basically discussing the road projects that were being submitted for the federal funds. Potential federal funds that'll be coming out of the ten billion or whatever they're gonna.
Is that part of that?
Yeah, like the Highway eighteen corridor, different projects were submitted. I think Rich said he submitted ones. I mean, basically, they all kind of, you know, just submit them all and see what happens, and so that was kind of the, pretty much just that.
Show the, show the federal government that we're short money?
There's projects out here, you know, there's bridge projects, huge roads products, you know, yeah, we need infrastructure, help with infrastructure money, and, and so we can get some of this stuff up to, up to snuff and also help the economy with a lot of jobs. I also had, uh, Farm Bureau, of course, on juvenile detention on Friday, North, North Iowa Juvenile Detention Friday. Many bus, budget discussions, you know. They did talk about, a little bit about being an access center, being some Mason City's closing or whatever for mental health. I don't know if that was just for the juvenile side of it or not, I'm not sure. There's a little discussion, some of them bought some access.
That's, I haven't heard much, because that's all changing.
That'd be that region.
Yeah, they're no longer CSS, they're with that CICS, and now it's, it's something that we, I think, we could have access to to pay if we had to send people there.
I mean, it'd probably be a good idea for that area over there if they need.
Yeah.
Mason City was an access center, it sounded like.
Right.
For something.
Yeah, I'll have to look in the next, I haven't, I haven't heard much of being inside of our region, but.
Right, we are looking for a new access center.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so anyway, that was pretty much just general meetings.
Okay. Right, I had, uh, just Farm Bureau, um, the discussion with them on numerous, numerous topics. Um, we, uh, they're, they're very concerned. It seemed to be about, uh, zoning as well as, uh, ambulance service and mental health stuff, just wondering how that was going, um, so. I'd say, I think it was a good meeting all the way around and very good discussion with them, um, the future of, of zoning and the future of EMS and, and all that, so.
Concerned me interrupt you that you guys read the handout that they, they gave us.
Yep.
I thought it was only about seventy-five percent of the rural, it said about eighty-five percent or eighty-six percent that, uh, rural, rural property owners pay into the county budget.
Oh, yeah.
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 There was a lot of other stuff in there, too.
Mm-hmm. Well, yeah, it's all, all the communities get their money back. It comes through here and goes back to them, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, yep, the rural pays.
The rules mean it.
Mm-hmm, a lot of it, good portion of it, yep. But, no, I'd say it's, it's good conversation to have with them and, and, uh, Trey might have overspoke a little bit by offering their, their, uh, his board to fill in on some things, so we may put them on the list for the courthouse board, see if there's a few of them that would, uh, that aren't already on it, or.
Absolutely.
We can spread them out a little bit.
None of them were at the meeting, the first meeting, I don't think, I don't remember them being there.
Some beans are all rural people too, but, so.
There's some younger people there.
Yeah, that's the thing, we get some younger ones in there that'll intend on being around here for a long time, like.
I didn't see any of those concept.
No, it was there. All right, so, so maybe put an email out to him, see if he can't drum up a couple more to, to join us in that, so. Uh, that's all I had last week, so. What's that?
I said I do want to discuss something from the department head.
Oh, sure, go ahead.
Right now?
Sure, yeah.
I just, we had our district meeting on Friday, and it's really important for everyone to be aware of legislation, House files and Senate files that are coming down, because there's two. The first one, I, don't quote me on any of this, because it's changing, but it has to do with drainage, and it will be huge. It's gonna be basically tit for tat, somehow exchange drainage monies for tax relief, which is basically gonna throw the drainage costs a lot onto non-egg people. It's, it's really gonna be devastating if it goes through, and so I don't have tons of information on that, but I've got what file number it is, so I'll pull it, but it's gonna be really huge. If I'll get you guys a copy of that soon as I can, and then the other one is forest reserve. The state, and this is changing too, but it's gonna happen, um, the state is doing away with forest reserve, it's being abused. It's supposed to be done just like with SLU, is maintained, you're supposed to have two hundred trees per acre. Um, basically, people are just signing up and not doing anything to maintain the land, and so what's gonna happen is starting twenty twenty-two, it's gonna be weeded out by districts, and then you actually have to apply with the DNR, it won't be through the assessor's office. And there's gonna be qualifications, they'll come out and check your land, and if you don't maintain it like forest reserve should be, you will not qualify.
Okay.
So that's gonna be pretty huge too, but not as big as this drainage one, which I'll get you information on that.
You got a house file already?
It's either Senate file or House file. I, I got it written down. I just learned about it on, on Friday, so I have a chance.
I haven't seen anything, yeah.
Yeah.
So, those are just two big issues coming down.
Yeah, okay. Uh, yeah, hopefully, see some info on them, because.
Yep.
I know I gotta call them to whail in too about EMS, that doesn't look good, so.
No.
I haven't seen anything from them, so I thought about emailing down there to those guys.
I don't believe it, I just, I haven't seen it, so it's interesting.
Right. Well, if it came in like Friday, then they probably haven't had time to.
And I did have a quick talk with Jane Friday night, too, about the solar tax deal, and she said that's in the House Ways and Means or something right now.
Was it?
Yeah, so they're working on it. She was gonna send me some details, a little more about how it'll work.
To get that lowered down?
Yeah, get that down so that we.
That threshold, yeah, so we get more of it.
Revenue back to the county. She was gonna work on that.
Going from that ten to one million?
Yep, I think that was the goal.
Good.
So.
It'd be nice if you could help us out with that.
Well, yeah.
And they should.
You don't want to go backwards.
No.
This is thing, we want to be good for the county, too, so.
Right. Well, right about nine thirty, we'll do our, um, last public hearing today, so I'll recess the, uh, regular meeting. And, uh, open the public hearing for the sale of lots, one through twelve on the top of Iowa, second edition. Yeah, taking a motion, motion to open the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion of second, uh, roll call, Lowberg, eyes maybe, stone, eye. Okay, public hearing is open. Lot prices for sale have been posted uh, in the papers. Is there anybody in the public that has any question or comments, um, about the, uh, county selling properties?
Has there been any inquiries?
Yes, there has. Um, there've been quite a few through economic development, but we've been waiting to get to this point of, of the pricing on them, so. Um, basically what we're doing is trying to, uh, just recoup our money with just a little bit of profit, which won't be profit, it would actually go back into uh, paying the debt down or connecting that Blue Water Tower. Um, because if this, if this fills up, then, uh, we would need more water capacity out there, so.
Is there already a line from the, that water tower down to that area?
No, that's what we'd have to do is, is connect it, dig a line in and.
See, I didn't mean to interrupt you, uh, Jackie, take your names when you, you talk during the public hearing, so she knows.
Okay, James Burge.
Yep.
Um, and there's, uh, the people that are interested in retail or the hotels or?
Yeah, that's what it will all be out there, basically, is retail, hotel, gas stations, whatever, um, no industrial, nothing like that, basically.
Still some agreements between us and the casino, too, and what can be there and what can't be.
Yeah.
That doesn't change.
Yeah, there won't be another casino or gambling facility there, you know, something there, there, they gave us the, the gift of the land, but they want to protect their business, so. And so, yeah, that was part of a trade basically we had with them, that anybody comes in, we'll have a list of, of, uh, types of businesses that cannot come in there.
Now, I know you guys have nothing to do with it, but are they ever gonna clean up on the west side of the Temple Black Town that, uh, where the fireworks?
Fireworks places, yeah. It's been a yearly thing with us, making them pick stuff up when they come and go on, yeah.
Are they ever gonna, you know, one time they're gonna have a convenience store there, they thought?
Well, yeah, they said something about maybe a wine place or something, you're right, yeah, and they just never, I don't know why, I guess.
But that has been sold to this company and is in the top of Iowa.
Yeah, we never owned that, actually.
Top of Iowa, right.
So.
Yep.
But, yeah, I don't know how that would fall under zoning rules, ours cleaning up, I guess, I'm not sure if there's anything in there.
There's an abatement process for in there? Is there anything in that being that's zoned, is there a different, do you know?
I think that's even a tough one to cover.
Right. Maybe just a courtesy letter that.
Well, we've done that a couple times, we had a personal call to them, and then they went and picked up the boxes they left laying there and all that stuff, and maybe they're still there now, Jim, I can't remember.
Well, just, it looks trashy, just with the weeds and the.
The trees and weeds, yeah.
Volunteer stuff coming through.
Well, that's the best thing that happened, because if they put the cement plant, because they cleaned it up and give them that lot.
That's what I told Rich, you know, it'd be the best thing, but I'll leave that up to them, I guess, so.
Yeah, it's kind of ongoing deal.
Yep.
Now, how soon could construction start out there, uh, so? Are people really hot and heavy to?
As soon as the, the lot gets transferred over and, um, permits are issued, basically.
Finish this process.
Yeah, we get this done, then it's, then it's out there for sale to anybody, so. Anybody else in the public have any comments or concerns with, uh, the sale of the properties from the county?
Anybody online?
Not hearing any.
Motion to close the public hearing.
There's a motion to close the public hearing, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call vote, Lowberg, eyes maybe, stone, eye. Public hearing is closed. I'll reconvene the regular meeting. And, um, do we want to waive the second, third readings of this?
You know, I guess, being there is really, I'm sitting with no comments, but your comments were just good questions, and there's really nobody against, I think everybody, everybody I've talked to wants, has been, you know, when are you gonna do this? When's this gonna go on?
Can't get done fast enough.
Right.
I think until we get this prices out there, I mean, I'm in favor of moving it, I guess, as quickly as we can. I think you've done a good job of covering our cost out there with the figures, you and Jason, and I'm okay with that. It's time to get that property going and on the tax rolls, so.
Is that a motion?
I will make that a motion.
Okay, there's a motion to waive the second and third readings, is there a second?
I'll second it.
There is a second. Any other discussion on it? That, I'll take the roll call vote, Lowberg, eyes maybe, stone, eye. The board will waive the second and third readings, um, the, uh, public hearings to sell county-owned property. I'll take a motion to approve um, the sale of the county-owned properties.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Roll call again, Lowberg, eyes maybe, stone, eye. That motion will pass.
If you have to do anything with the transfer of that one property back to the casino.
Yep, it's, it's in there, yeah.
Okay.
It's in there, that lot twelve is the one dollar to Diamond Joe worth.
Okay.
That was part of the agreement as well, so.
Gotcha, okay.
All right. So those lots will be posted for sale. All right, I believe we've fulfilled our agenda. Um, bringing that was brought, that needs to go on the board, or the, uh, future agendas by chance? Don't think we have anything, we, more, be more than two of us have? Or more than one of us, I should say.
Oh, we got a deal from ISAC. Do we have our duns and our salmon place for this rescue accident?
That would be, oh, for the federal?
For the federal, yeah.
Federal money?
In order to get, in order to get that.
Yeah, Jackie's working on it.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Jackie. Okay, nothing else said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Motion of second, all in favor, I?
I.
All right, meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Yeah, I'm gonna close the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Yep.